Johnson, would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes, approval of the minutes, the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 28th, 2025.
I move approval of the minutes. Second?
Motion second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Item two, claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through October 31st, 2025. I'll note there is an amendment for payroll.
I move approval of the claims, including the payroll, through October 29th, 2025. Second?
Motion second to approve item two A, including payroll dispersments through October 29th, 2025. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of the claims for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided by Nebraska revised statute 23-135 for Unico Group dated November 3rd, 2025, for a total of seventeen thousand, four hundred, eight dollars and forty-three cents.
I move approval. Second?
Motion second to approve two B. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is a special presentation, the Commissioners Award of Excellence since September 2025 to Kerry Dean Human Services in the category of safety.
Would you and Kerry please come forward, and whomever else is appropriate?
And Commissioners, I'll read the letter into the record. Kerry Dean, juvenile justice specialist with Human Services, has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for September 2025. Dean has worked for Lancaster County for eight years. He was nominated by Sarah Hoyle in the category of safety. In her nomination, Hoyle states, "Youth were referred to Human Services Office for supervision who were higher risk than the office usually supervised." Additionally, the youth were expected to be under the office supervision for over a year. Kerry volunteered to assist in supervising these youth, which included working weekends and in the evenings. During this time, Kerry was able to form a connection with the youth and their families that opened up trust and communication with our office, something that can be difficult to achieve with families who often don't trust us. Kerry's outreach and efforts involved many activities beyond his traditional supervision role, which helped strengthen the rapport between the youth and their families. Kerry stepped up and volunteered, knowing everyone, including him, had a full caseload, and the office was adapting a new risk level of youth we were serving. He also suggested policy and practice changes to better serve the population while continuing to provide excellent customer service. These youth, with many serious pending charges, have remained in the community for over a year with no harm to community members during this time because of Kerry's excellent interpersonal skills and his ability to form trusting relationships with them. If these youths weren't into the community, they likely would be incarcerated in our local detention facility. Kerry's current assignment does not involve being on call or supervising high-risk youth. However, Kerry has worked in the field for over thirty years and has the education and experience to supervise these youth effectively. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Kerry Dean with the Commissioners Award of Excellence for the month of September 2025.
Kerry, you're my very, very real partner, genuinely, to get to present you with this award. Your service to our community and to our county is, has gone so far above and beyond the normal call. And I just want to tell you publicly and formally how much we appreciate everything you do for us and how lucky we are to have you on the team. Thanks, really.
I'd just like to thank Sarah and actually two of my supervisors from probation. Most of the people I've worked with for the past thirty-five years are here, and before that, I worked for Sarah's husband, so I guess I've been Hoyle-owned for quite a few years. Thanks.
I want to add, when I first met Kerry, I was working for Lori, and one of the things that Lori said when she was telling me about Kerry was, he's the person that if I ever run out of gas or have a flat tire, he would be the one I would call because he would be there immediately. And that is true for how he serves kids within our jurisdiction. He is able to get into family homes and make connections like nobody else. We had a really tough, tough kiddo here in the last couple months, and Kerry was over at the house helping the mom hang pictures on the wall and conversing with her that way, but that's how he's able to build trust and rapport. What we have with supervision, even with a monitor, it's just a monitor, and kids can cut it off at any time. It's the relationship that, that they have with our office, with the supervisors, that really keeps the kids in the community, keeps them safe, keeps them from harming others. So, thank you for all you do.
Thanks.
Folks, I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, we could embarrass you now.
Right.
Any, any comments from...
Well, I think there's really no better outcome than the line here that said, "These youth, many with serious pending charges, remained in the community for over a year with no harm to community members." That's the ultimate goal. And what a difference you've made in the lives of these youth and in their families. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you so much, Kerry. Really grateful for your service.
Thanks. Our community is very much better for your service and for having you on this team. Thank you again.
It's fun to honor your longevity as well as your impact, so thanks. Keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioners, that brings us to item four, the consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner, by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of: A, amendments to the following county contracts: C-24-0862 with safety clean systems for the used oil and antifreeze collection program service; C-22-0861 with Stairi Cycle Incorporated for hazardous medical waste pickup and disposal services; C-24-0885 with E&amp;A Consulting Group Incorporated for the provision of engineering services for Bridge X-84; right-of-way contracts with the following: Donna B. Johnson Revocable Trust, North 40th Street and Branch Oak Road, in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars; Leeford W. Burnett, Rock Creek Road, North 14th Street, in the amount of four hundred and eighty-seven dollars; Studabaker Farms Incorporated, Rock Creek Road and North 14th Street, in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars; Heritage Farms Incorporated, Rock Creek Road and North 14th Street, in the amount of two hundred, excuse me, in the amount of two thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars; C Utility Permit 2678 with Panama Energy Center LLC for underground bore of electric cable; D Change Order 3 to County Contract C-25-0328 with Pavers Incorporated to extend the project completion date to November 30th, 2025; E Change Order 1 to County Contract C-25-0474 with Pavers Incorporated to add asphalt joint patching repair on North 148th Street; and F Setting a Public Hearing on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, 9:00 a.m. at Room 112 of the County City Building regarding an amendment regarding County Resolution 4870 establishing hours of operation for the sale of alcoholic liquors in Lancaster County.
I move approval of the consent items. Second?
Motion and second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five, new business, five A, a resolution in the matter of authorizing the county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five B, resolution of the matter regulating mailboxes located along county roads to ensure the safety of the traveling public and maintain efficient operation of the county road system.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, the mailbox policy is something that we've talked about for a very long time. There's substantial research behind dangerous mailboxes, actually done by the University of Nebraska Crash Testing Lab. And so with this policy, we are hoping that we can clear up any issues of concern and give a little more definition to the requirements for mailboxes and make it safer for the traveling public.
I'd move approval.
Second?
Motion second. So Pam, does this policy, is this retroactive then? Are existing mailboxes now covered by this policy that we're enacting here?
Commissioner, that, that is correct, and so what we will be doing is the county will not be replacing all the mailboxes in the county because that would be extraordinary. What we will be doing is we will be installing, and I should say continuing to install, crash-worthy mailboxes. And we're required to do that on our federal aid corridor. I don't know how I would ever answer the question in court that we constructed new miles of pavement and just chose not to do it on corridors that we financed, and we financed a hundred percent. In addition to that, mailboxes that are a danger to, to the public, those individuals will receive a letter requesting that they remove their mailbox.
What, and they'll be, what kind of timeframe are we looking at for this?
So Commissioner Vest, in the information that we presented at the staff meeting last week, we actually did include the sample letter that we will be sending people, and in that letter, it states thirty days.
Thirty days to replace their mailbox?
That is correct.
Definitely want our roads to be safe, and I appreciate your attention to this. Since you educated us on this a few months ago, I paid attention driving through the county, and there's definitely some out there that I realize could do a lot of damage, not just to a car, but to the driver or passengers, and so I appreciate your attention to the detail on that and, and continuing to improve the safety of our county.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, obviously, that's all true. We can't deny that, and that's the goal here, especially, I think, when with what the county engineer is saying about federal projects. We have to have reasonable standards. But, you know, when people hate the government, sometimes it's the elected officials, sometimes it's the bureaucrats they deal with because they don't feel like they're heard or listened to or given any respect. And my concern here is, now we're going to people and saying, "You have thirty days to redo your mailbox," and it's been there for ten years or fifteen years, and I get both sides of this. And we're undoubtedly going to get phone calls on this, so we know they're coming. I don't have any other questions. Commissioners, any other comments? All right, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five C, an interlocal agreement with the city of Waverly to improve a portion of Oldfield Street from North 141st Street to Canongate Road within Waverly's corporate limits. The county will regrade and apply permazine to the road, and Waverly will pay the county twenty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-eight cents for these services.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, and I am, I am joined by the city of Waverly Administrator. And so we do strive to work with the cities and villages within our jurisdiction. This is a situation where Oldfield Road, our shop has been on it, nearest I can tell, or shops since, since probably the 1930s or late 1920s. It's a gravel road. The city has grown up around the gravel road. It is now, it has some dust issues. It has a lot of traffic on it. It's the same discussions that we have internally about our gravel roads that have a lot of traffic. It also has a lot of stopping and starting. And so we have successfully used the permazine product in three locations in Lancaster County. I'm going to say that we learned some things from that, and, and we're going to be better at our second application. This is agreement with the city of Waverly to regrade that road, and then it will seem kind of crazy when we do it. So if anyone gets a phone call, I just want to be aware, we're going to rip up that road, regrade it, compact it, and then we're going to rip it up again and put the permazine in it. Because if you're trying to reshape the road and you've already put the permazine in, it gets to be very difficult to work with in the meantime. So we want to get the road so everyone's happy, and then we go. There's one other criteria that I'm a little concerned about this first week in November, and that's that we need three consecutive days where the temperature does not dip under forty degrees, including the evening. And so if we see that window, we're going to run for it. We may not see that window, and then we'll be there first thing in the spring when we can get there.
Stephanie?
So, yeah, so thank you to the county for partnering with us on this. We appreciate the collaboration. Pam's always been really great about answering questions when I call her and say, "Hey, this road's really dusty. What do we have? What kind of solutions do you have?" So we appreciate Pam and Larry working with us on this, and then also providing the, their equipment and, and their expertise and skills to, to grade this road. So, long story short, we've applied for some grant funding to help pave this road. The cost of paving this road is right around three million dollars. When we do that, we'll put a, a nice walking trail next to it. In the meantime, while we're waiting to, to get all of those financial pieces together, we're going to use this product, and hopefully this turns out to be something that's beneficial to our community, but also is a great, helps to experiment with other roads in the county. So, thank you.
Seems like a really good collaboration. I'm just wondering, what's the, the length of the life of this permazine?
So permazine is different than other dust inhibitors that we've talked about in that it is an enzyme binder, and it actually continues to harden for a couple of years. And so what, what I'm hearing from the research here in the Midwest is if it was installed correctly and under the right conditions, that, that the life is, is five to ten years. Nobody has gotten through the life where it has, it has started to disintegrate yet, and so we're really hoping that this can be an awesome opportunity for Waverly to really improve the quality of life for the citizens that live along this corridor. Because it is, at this point, the south side of the road is, I'll call it dense residential development.
Right, yes, pretty much so.
I had the chance, you'd, there was one gravel road that you had done, or road that you had put the permazine on, you had told me about. So I was, I was running through the county, looking at some lots and stuff like that out in your Denton a few months ago, and I was just like, "Oh, I, I should check this out." So I had paid attention to how much dust I was kicking up behind me on these less traveled roads, and then I went onto a road that had permazine on it, and I could tell instantaneously how much better it was at kicking at dust. I mean, it was, me looking through my rearview mirror, easily seventy percent less dust was going up into the air. And so seems like a good solution. I hope it works well in Waverly as well.
We hope so too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second?
Yeah.
Motion second to approve. Good, good partnership. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five D, a, an agreement with the city of Lincoln to lease seventeen thousand, six hundred and five square feet of office space located at 901 West Bond Street for the use of the County Use Records Management Department. Total rent for the first twelve-month term is a hundred and five thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Peterson, Director of Facilities and Property, and we have...
Roads Director, Records Management.
What we've got before you this morning is a lease agreement between the county and the city, and this replaces what had already been signed. That was an interlocal between Lancaster County and Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. The city attorney's office came back and said we would prefer this format, especially for a lease that is, you don't get the term and the costs associated with it. So everything in here is identical to what you've already signed.
Thank you.
Any follow-up with anything you'd like to add, Josh?
No, just something I wanted to check off my list, so I wanted to come down to that.
Let's help you check it off. I move approval.
Second?
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five E, contract with Jones Automotive Incorporated for the supply and installation of emergency equipment services for the city of Lincoln and Lancaster County. The cost shall not exceed twenty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. Move approval.
Second?
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five F, recommendations from the Southeast Nebraska Development District. Send to warden contract through Lancaster County Owner Occupied Rehabilitation Housing Program to Crew Line Exteriors in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Good morning, Dennis Meyer, Budget and Fiscal Officer. This contract here could be maybe the last one that, that we do for this program. So we're trying to kind of get it wrapped up by December 31st. So this one here is just really to remove and replace six windows, wrap the exterior trim, and then remove and replace gutters. So this project, we've, we've approved a couple other projects, or a couple other pieces on this project. This is kind of the last one, because this one's for seventy-nine hundred, and a lot of those projects can go up to right about twenty-five thousand. So this, to me, is the last piece. Send, we'll then still have a few administrative costs as we're trying to wrap this up. File our last report by December 31st, and then for the most part, this program will go away, and we'll move into the new project.
I move approval. Second?
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five G, authorizing the Mental Health Crisis Center Director, Scott Etherington, to sign a certification assuring compliance with substance abuse and mental health services administration, charitable choice statutes, and related regulations.
I move approval. Second?
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Five H, compensant, compensatory time off agreements with the following Mental Health Crisis Center employees: Sidney Stats, Larry Pickrell, Michael Mathiens, Darren Williams, and Greta Gregory.
I move approval.
Second?
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item six is public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items related to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to comment on items related to county business not on the agenda, please come forward. I see none. We will close public comment.
Announcements, the Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, November 6th, 2025, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Board of Commissioners will not hold a regular meeting next Tuesday, November 11th, 2025, in observance of Veterans Day. The Board of Commissioners will hold the following on Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Board of Commissioners meeting, a public hearing regarding County Resolution 4870 establishing hours of operations for the sale of alcoholic liquors in Lancaster County. The Board of Equalization meeting. Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancasterne.gov. Board of Commissioners meetings are streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item eight is adjournment.
Move adjourn.
Second?
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. I will now open the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. Mr. Clerk?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written material to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed at the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. Move approval.
Second?
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second?
Motion and second to approve item two. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is our public hearing, a public hearing on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications: Nebraska Crop Improvement Association, Hope Spoke, Nebraska Wesleyan University, Tabitha Healthcare Incorporated, Madonna Rehabilitation Hospital, Community Action Partnership of Lancaster and Saunders Counties, Bryan Medical Center, Christian Record Service Incorporated, City Light North Lincoln Church, Center Point, and School Sisters of Christ the King.
We'll now open a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak on any of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
That brings us to the public hearing action items. Item four A, action on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I move approval of these applications. Second?
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll. Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item five is reserved for public comment.
Any members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business not on the agenda, please come forward. I see none. We'll close public comment.
Item six is adjournment.
I move we adjourn. Second?
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.